All right, it is 7:01, I'm calling this term of the Department of Education we need to order. Please stand if you're able and join me in the press relations.
(inaudible) 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 Yep. So, public notice of all meetings, this meeting in particular has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal-Sendall, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in the schools throughout the district and on the GSTWI.org website, as well as the cable access channel 96. Thank you. Okay, on to number three, citizen comments. And we'll be following the same procedures we had in the past, a couple of meetings. First up, and I'll call the person on deck as well, Ina Turner, and Elaine Godfrey will be second.
Good evening, my name is Ina Turner.
If you could just restate your name and your address as well?
Ina Turner, and we're not giving your address, so sorry about that, but we don't feel comfortable with what happened last time giving that information. It was enough that our names were published and we were ashamed, and now it's going into my time, so could you please reset it to three minutes so I can have my time?
I just, just so you know, board policy is state your name and address.
Well, it's never been, that's never been here.
If you want to adhere to it or not.
You've never had us do that, ever, so we're not starting that today, you can't change five seconds before the meeting.
(inaudible)
Germantown, Wisconsin, there we go. So can I please say my time back, thank you?
Okay.
At a recent event, I had the pleasure of meeting Adam Coleman, author of Black Victim to Black Victor. I encourage all of you to read this book and to hear Adam's message. I asked Adam what he would say to the school board and our opposition about equity, white privilege, action civics, social emotional learning, culturally responsive teaching, and all the other buzzwords to cover up the CRT agenda being pushed in our schools. These are the same words our ACE committee seems to like to use to cover up their CRT agenda. Here's what he said, and I quote, "The travesty of Jim Crow laws was not how white people treated black people, it was how the government was utilized to enforce racialized policies which dictated the behavior of both white and black Americans. As a representative of a government institution such as a school, creating policies and an educational standard surrounded by the premise of race puts you in a similar position as the people in the past that we chastise today. If we are to live in a multigracial society pointing out our differences in enhancing the perception of our inevitable success or failure due to our skin pigmentation will only perpetuate the hatred you claim to want to end. If you are doing this to crusade against what you think are black people's inevitable failures, then you are doing black people like myself a disservice. Placing blacks as constant victims only continues to reduce us to being agentless victims when we are American victors. We do not need your pity and we do not need saving. Our differences are only superficial and treating us differently only highlights how superficial racial policies truly are. If you want us to be equals in America, then treat us like one. Stop viewing us as the white man's burden and treat us as human beings with agency. If you truly want to help the black people or any other minority, do something that previous governmental institutions like our schools failed to do. Stay out of our way. I wholeheartedly agree with Adam and his message. I also want to add that with still zero clarity into the ACE committee in its subgroups, we ask this board to take a vote to abolish ACE."
Helen Goldtray, Germantown. I first want to begin by thanking the board for having the courage to do what's right for our children and not allowing yourselves to be intimidated by fear tactics. I guess we all learned a valuable lesson at the last school board meeting. If you can't come with facts, let's resort to cancel culture, intimidation, and other disgusting tactics by targeting the opposition and threatening their jobs. If this tactic doesn't work, what do you plan to do next? Bury my family, my children, throw rocks through my windows, slash the tires on my car? It's disgusting. And let me be the first to tell you that your message gets completely lost when you resort to blatantly bullying, which may I remind you is against board policy. I heard many of you say that you don't hate America, that you try and silence us. As far as I know, I still have my First Amendment rights of free speech. I have a right, will never resort to these vile, ambitious tactics to get my point across. This really says a lot in regard to your character. We have been called white supremacists by many of you, perhaps you should take a long hard look in the mirror. It appears that many of you are the actual supremacists here. By definition, supremacist is a person who believes that a particular group is superior and should therefore dominate society. This is exactly what I witnessed from the opposition at the last school board meeting. Let me also tell you, although you may have succeeded in scaring people away from showing up in person to these school board meetings, there are plenty of us emailing, calling, and working behind the scenes. We are stronger than you think and we are not going away. We will continue to advocate for our children as that is our obligation as parents. Brett, as our superintendent, you have the responsibility of full transparency. You published the names of all the speakers that spoke in opposition to CRT in the minutes for the June 7th board meeting. However, none of the names have been published for any other meeting where both sides spoke in regard to CRT. You handed over our names on a silver platter. Coincidence? I don't think so. As our superintendent, you're supposed to be nonpartisan. It is disturbing and clearly shows your position. You are directly accountable to the board, and I hope the board has their eyes wide open and sees what is truly happening here. I am going on record now. I am a parent and resident of Germantown, representing and advocating for my own children. I am in no way, shape, or form representing or speaking on behalf of the company I work for. My company's DEI statement has nothing to do with my belief that CRT is based on Marxism and communism and is divisive, dangerous, and racist, and therefore has no place in our schools. Never once have I mentioned my company's name in any of my speeches, which are all recorded for your listening pleasure. I will now read a quote from one of the founders of CRT, Iver and Pendy, which if anything should be eye-opening to every American as to its true purpose and intent. He states, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." There it is, oh. CRT has nothing to do with teaching history, it is about teaching racism as a tool for combating future racism. It is a tool that divides our students and teachers and teaches our young children that they are somehow responsible for the past actions of others. How does this possibly solve anything? What this only accomplishes is dividing us further and is devastatingly harmful. Wake up, Germantown, is this what you truly want?
Next is Ross Ewer, and on deck is Teresa Schneider.
I yield my time to Ellen, if she needs more.
Thank you.
Still on interment for one time.
Hi, so.
Helen Goldtray, Germantown. I align by reading a speech that really hit home for me. It was given at a school board meeting by another Russian immigrant much like myself in regard to CRT. Her views and comments 100% aligned with mine and are exactly why I oppose CRT. In regard to CRT, she says, "The proposed anti-racist program is just a prettier name for racial Marxist teaching. You don't need to sugarcoat it for me. I lived it. Same methods, same vocabulary, same preferential treatment to certain groups. That's why equity is packed with good causes like diversity and inclusion, so nobody, no one can challenge it. But I know, and ask me how I know, I was born in the Soviet Union and my family has seen all of it. Suffering first at the hand of the Nazis and then from tyrannical Soviet ideology. Back there, what started as equity for all quickly ended with nothing to eat for my people. And now my family is here because of it, because equity does work. We did not accept synthetic equity, we had enough of that one. We came here for equal opportunity under the law and bring us to this country. Soviets extinguished all the excellence and opportunity. Equity is code for communism and Biden's sameness, dropping the hammer directly on the head of the left sacred power. They told us they were advocates for equity and enemies of privilege. People believed this and we paid the awful price. This ideology killed millions of people worldwide and now you're getting it here to indoctrinate our own children. Equity was just a tool used by communists to make sure everyone was equally poorly educated so people didn't question authority. While the definition is about fairness, in reality it means same outcome. Nobody excels, mine, Bob's, sameness. The key tactic is to remove all the incentive and motivation to succeed for all students. Why are you trying to motivate students and lower the standards instead of directly helping underperforming students? That's exactly what equity means, in reality making everyone mediocre. This is not a central school district in the Soviet Union, this is a school district in the United States of America. I lived in Siberia, Moscow, in my case of my family. I switched continents because of equity. I can and I will switch school districts if equity gets pushed, but I will never switch on the American dream and equal opportunity. The only system in the world that lifts people up is second chances to people like me, motivates and brings out the best in people regardless of race and ethnicity. I lived it and you don't have to tell me what is equity."
Next up is Jody Grab, after Teresa.
My name is Teresa Brager, and I'm president of Germantown. I would like to use my time to discuss the board policy PO 5310, vaguely named health services. The wording in this policy needs to be clarified for transparency for the parents. I quote, "The board shall notify parents at least annually at the beginning of the school year or the specific or approximate dates when any non-emergency invasive physical is scheduled or expected to be scheduled," end quote. It goes on to say, quote, "The term invasive physical examination means any medical examination that involves the exposure of private body parts or act during such examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body," end quote. I'm sorry, lettered three, seriously? We, the parents, are demanding transparency, explanations, and editing of this policy that was quietly and conveniently amended in October of 2020 in the midst of a pandemic. We understand that third-party company holds the liability of this policy, so if this happens, we can't hold two people responsible or accountable for whatever happens to our children. We will not accept for any reasons up to and including insertion or injecting of anything in our children. The policy goes far and above those words of physical policy that Tom Hardy referred to in an email. Okay, that's a whole separate policy. This is clearly not speaking to that requirement and none of you have any measure for what this says or covers. You have the entire community scrutinizing every word of your policies thanks to your lack of transparency and general lack of trust in you. You wanted parental involvement in the immediate, you got it. We are not going away, we're not shutting up, and we are here to tell you that we, the parents, make the decisions for our children, not you. It is a sad day when my children, as well as many others, have now been talked to and warned that they are not consent or comply to anything that the school, nurse, teachers, or administration wants to do them in any medical or physical way unless we have told them it's okay. This should give every one of you, parents are not paused to reevaluate these policies. While we have not, when we have not, when we have warned our kids about predators outside our home, now we have to warn about people in the school. Okay? My second concern tonight is to ask that you and to go on public record to say that please, please do not lock back your decision on making masks optional, no matter what the CDC is saying, no matter where the vaccine status is for these children, okay? Every single child needs to be treated the same. Masks to be optional for the next year and no segregation of vaccinated kids versus unvaccinated kids. We can see it coming and we're trying really hard to stop this before it gets ugly. And it's going to get even weirder next year. Thank you.
Next up is Krista Ewer.
Good evening. On Friday, I sat in the front office asking why the anonymous preliminary points that the school board has probably posted on the website is still not on the agenda for this school policy. And he told me, "Well, that's what you want, that's not what everyone wants." So I quickly asked him, "Who doesn't want no discrimination?" To which he replied that at least one of the points could quickly translate to white fragility. So I'm still trying to pick my jaw off the floor from that conversation and I'm just shocked that our leadership is saying this. So denying an end to racism by lifting up racism and using divisive language is where we're going? If we were all fragile to differences, we wouldn't be here night after night fighting for this community. The term white fragility has to be among the most manipulative and corrupt terms in my eyes. No one in this community is afraid to talk about race. Quite the contrary, we should absolutely talk about differences. But to do so in this negative and if you're white you can never do it right, destructive and divisive approach is devastating to all of us, one another, and our children. Personally, I'm extremely offended by the term and seriously question anyone's motives who has the audacity to speak it. This is very simple, we need to stop complicating it. Celebrate individuals. Love is love. Be inclusive to everyone, which of course includes our students with greater support needs. Talk about all history. Teach about differences, no one's asking me not to. We are simply saying do not teach divisiveness or victimhood. Do not teach our kids they are oppressors nor that they are oppressed. Teach them confidence, leadership, and teamwork. The leadership mindset course seems amazing, but I can't as easily tell about the other new curriculum. As I sat in Brett's office, I said, "So if I'm a parent trying so hard to get involved and do my homework and learn how to find out more and I'm still not sure how, how is anyone who not trying supposed to know? And then I'm supposed to take a month's worth of information and try to comment it on it all in three minutes?" And he casually replied, "Well, you don't have to." Guys, they don't want us here. They don't want us knowing what they're teaching our kids five days a week and that's not okay. So school board, please stand up for us. Brian, you keep saying if the parents need to correct things, they will. Let us do that, support us. Let us parent and give us the transparency to do so. So please, let's not throw around terms that make us question there's an angle for no discrimination because there's no angle. Treat everyone the same, love everyone, lift them up, and celebrate them. Thank you.
Krista, on deck is Alyssa Powell. Powell?
Krista Ewer, Germantown. First I want to start by saying thank you for taking the first step in banning CRT, but the job's not done. At the last meeting in the lobby, when I walked out there, there was one CRT supporter speaking to another one, and they said, "It's banned in the UOLing, we can still keep on teaching it." Beyond that, you've heard from teachers in the school district speak about how it's been taught in the district for years. And from the way they talk about it and present, it's not just as a lens. And since there's such a lack of transparency and double talk from the district administration and staff, parents have begun requesting the information that's being taught during teacher in services at the school level. Each school has its own building initiative. When the parents asked Mr. Stausland and, there was a specific parent, they asked Mr. Stausland and Ms. O'Brien for the documentation, presentations, and PowerPoints presented to MacArthur, that they were initially told that neither the superintendent or director of teaching and learning had access to those documents or knew anything about the contents. Think about that. The superintendent and director of teaching and learning did not know what was being taught to the teachers. They don't know what the school's spending time and taxpayer money teaching our teachers. This is a failure. And because this is the case, they don't know what's going on in each building. How can they state that CRT is only being taught in two classes? How can they know that for sure if they don't know what is going on inside the buildings? In the files that were eventually retrieved by Mr. Stausland from MacArthur, there were several PowerPoints on privilege and included intersectionality. Both concepts are heavily embedded in CRT. The term intersectionality is conceptualized and coined by the godmother of CRT, Kimberly Crenshaw. If CRT is only in two AP classes at the high school being taught as a lens, what is it doing in a teacher in service? In the recent board statement with regards to material that were disseminated to staff, that going forward, the school is confident, the school board is confident that similar materials will not be sent out to staff. In order for the parents to know this to be true, all in-service material needs to be transparent along with curriculum. Currently, there is no control, no one taking responsibility for what's already been taught. Give the parents the tools to know what our children are being taught. Hold the administrators and teachers responsible for not following the school board's values and boundaries. You are the board, and you hold the power. And whether it's intentional or not, you send the message of what will be tolerated and what won't be tolerated. You guys have the power to draw the line. Thank you.
Alyssa, and on deck is Sarah Larson.
Alyssa Paolo, Germantown. So what I have here are some of the slides that were presented at the MacArthur Teacher in Services, this is not the full deck, I just pulled some of the more pertinent ones, to really highlight why we need transparency with the teacher in service material. I will say that the principal who did present this material no longer works in the district, but I still think it's important to highlight it. So the titles of this slide presentations included gender and privilege, disability and privilege, privilege and legal structures, identity and personality, socioeconomic status and privilege, culturally responsive classrooms, privilege, intersectionality, and positionality. So my first key takeaway is this is a lot of talk on privilege. So one of the slides talks about what are we born into? Privilege, the unheard personal privilege that we all enjoy include gender, family, socioeconomic status, race, ableism, language, sexual orientation, and political beliefs. This completely diminishes the hard work and merit that transcends across all of these different categories. On another slide, he talks about culturally and linguistically responsive teaching. It goes on to say that we sustain linguistic plurality by teaching students to use and value education in English in all of its forms rather than valuing standardized English above other languages. So we are not to teach our elementary students proper English. How do we expect them to be proficient in reading and writing? On the next slide, he states, "Learn in a classroom community in which educators are careful not to send explicit or implicit messages that one form of English is more correct or acceptable than another." So teachers are to lower their standards for their students and to not offend anyone? Again, if we can teach proper English and build on early proficiency, we will not have a 50% proficiency in reading and writing amongst our high school students. His last slide talks about privilege, intersectionality, and positionality. So intersectionality is a key term that was introduced by Kimberly Crenshaw. She trained under Derek Bell, who is one of the key people of CRT. Crenshaw introduces concept in 1991 and explains that intersectionality is a modern approach to our CRT and feminism to incorporate political activism while retaining their understandings of race and gender as cultural constructs. I feel this material highlights the need for transparency that only our curriculum but also in our teacher in services. How is this content honestly beneficial to our teachers? Were there no other more pressing issues to be addressed at this in-service? This material seems to be a principal who enjoyed being on his soapbox a little too much. CRT and intersectionality lead to divisiveness, pessimism, and cynicism. This type of material is one that has led the district, the distrust of parents in the district, and skepticism. I am asking for all teacher in-service material to be provided to the board ahead of time and available for parents to see. Thank you.
Sarah, and then Gary Pointe, upstairs on deck.
Sarah Larson, Germantown. Thank you first for the statement that you put on the board about what you believe regarding CRT as well as diversity, equality, and inclusion. It certainly was a great first step, but I'd like to see you take that further. Those three statements about what you do not believe need to be put in the employee handbook as well as the policy manual. We need to assure staff who uphold more conservative viewpoints are not being compelled to go ahead and affirm these as well as students shouldn't be compelled to affirm these ideals. Stated previously, we need to get ahead of the ball on the curriculum, professional development, and building goal transparency. As you've heard through many of these comments, there's a lot of stuff that you guys haven't been privy to. Clearly, the administration doesn't know is going on, and so I provided you with motions via email. You'll find that it's already underpinned with law that is pending in other states surrounding the transparency. COVID has been a blessing in terms of what it's brought to light for parents and making them more engaged in understanding what's going on. And so I ask that you go ahead and get those materials on the website as soon as possible, make those motions so that there is teeth behind what expectations are for getting those materials online. You'll find that this transparency is going to help the administration keep better track of what's going on and be able to head off things that our community doesn't want before it becomes a Mark Valian talk show. And it also is going to provide that trust but verifying mechanism for the community. Thanks.
Welcome, Gary, and next is Jean Mary.
So thanks to Sarah, I had almost regretted everything. Thank you for passing the ban on CRT and clarification on diversity, equity, and equality and inclusion. Anyone listening to the debate could not have been confused by the discussion or the motion, so we were surprised and annoyed that the motion was documented with the term equity. I understand that the ACLU sent a letter to the superintendent insinuating that banning CRT violates state laws. It does not. The letter provided no support for their assertion. I was going to talk about the three beliefs that you put on the website, Sarah took care of that. It must be made abundantly clear that contradicting these beliefs will not be tolerated in a classroom, will not be contradicted in staff or teacher education, will not be contradicted in any teacher in-service presentations, and will not be tolerated in any official communications from any administrator, staff, or staff in the district. Once these items are incorporated in policies and handbooks, there can and must be disciplinary action taken against those who fail to adhere to these beliefs, including the superintendent's office. The failure to enforce the CRT ban and prevent teaching this negativity and decisiveness will continue on the debate. You are not alone. In addition to the parents who show up here to support the ban of these beliefs, the Washington County Board on Wednesday is considering a resolution to ask the legislature to encapsulate the CRT ban and these same beliefs in the state law. The legislature is considering legislation, ban of CRT in all state schools, supporting the beliefs that you articulate on the website. You must protect teachers from being bullied into teaching theories and beliefs that are unacceptable within the district. We appreciate your statement that inappropriate materials will not be distributed, but without documented and enforceable consequences, there will be no compliance. I served in the military. I support through speech. Every administrator, staff member, teacher has a right within what they want. And outside of school, on school activities, or not to use the school resources, they have a right to speak what they believe. They do not have a right to impose their base on our children, force compliance by others who disagree or use district resources inappropriately. Force compliance by others who disagree or use district resources inappropriately. Those administrators, staff, and teachers who have different values have a right to leave the Germantown School District and find a district that more closely aligns with their personal values. We highly encourage them to seek employment elsewhere, and we encourage you to expedite that search.
Next is Scott Hedwig.
Jean Mary, Germantown. I want to say again that CRT is not just a classroom subject. It is a methodology of teaching that needs to stop. How many people do we really think want our children to be taught divisiveness and misleading or blatantly false history and to hate our country? A case in point, the story of two Georges. According to a local parent of a kindergartner, when he asked what she had learned in school one day past spring, was told with the class learning that George Washington was a very bad man. Yes, now he was totally discredited, the first president to five-year-olds because he owned slaves. But do we teach our children that he never bought or sold a slave? That he inherited them? And according to Virginia Law, the time was not allowed to emancipate them? That he treated them well? One was even the old overseer of his farm. George Washington was a gentle man who did a great deal for his country. And now we are teaching our children that his entire life is to be judged and condemned by one presumed bad act? Then we have George Floyd, who led a life of crime. His criminal history includes assault, armed robbery, home invasion, and a wide range of drug charges. He died unfortunately during an arrest for yet another crime. But because he died with the hands of a police officer, we are teaching our children to ignore the victims of his crimes and that he is a victim who should be commemorated? No, CRT has not been taught in a kindergarten class, but the terms behind CRT were, and they're clearly being taught in every grade level. To hate everything about our country, to blame, to feel guilty, to feel powerless, that all the good in our history that brought us to today needs to be replaced with a new version that only looks at our faults. Teach our entire history, all of it, without the CRT bias, and our children will learn what is right and what is wrong and how to treat others by studying our complete history. So imagine the two Georges. Think about the thing you have done in your life that you most regret. Are you willing to tell your children to judge you based on that unfortunate act? Which one of us would want our children to be nothing more than a list of our mistakes? Thank you.
Next is Kelly Beecham.
Scott, I'm in Germantown. Thank you for the time. I only have three points tonight. I've come before this board over the last 14 or 15 months. I've asked for a number of things, and I don't expect all of them to be, you know, pay to pivot to this guy. But I did ask for bios on all your board members probably about four or five months ago. I have not seen them on our website. However, I can go on various websites in Washington County, Waukesha County, and Los Angeles County and find out things about the board. I would like to know about your background. I would like to know. Whatever you like to do, I'd like you to humanize yourselves by just writing a little biography. If you call it curriculum biography, I don't care what you call it. I got it out. I asked for it four months ago. Mr. Silver, it made a comment that he didn't think it was a big deal. I still don't see it out. I see a lot of their stuff. Why not? I mean, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I'll leave that up to you. Okay? The second thing is, even though my kids are through the district, we have a very good district here, let's be honest. We have a very good school district. But I am concerned that our rankings seem to keep dropping. I mean, as little as a decade ago, we were a top-five school in the state. We are not a top-five school in the state. I don't care which ranking service you look at or not. Now, in the last decade, forget that, the last six years, we spent $105 million on our schools. A lot of the referendum was sold as, we have overcrowded, we did have some. We have kids learning in the hallways. That's unacceptable. That's a negative environment for them. That's what I've heard over and over and over again. Hey, we spent $105 million, right? Most of you guys had a part in it. Why are the rankings going down? We have the space, we have the facilities, we have everything. Let's get the rankings back up. Otherwise, it looks really bad to spend that much money for a result that keeps going down. You guys can talk about that. But that's just what I see, and unfortunately, I've been around here long enough. Not as long as some of you, but longer than some of you. And I've seen us at a higher place. Let's get those rankings back up. That's all I'm saying. And then the final thing is, I got clarification. I was unsure if we really were going to one board meeting a month. If that is truly the case, I'm sorry, that's unconscion. Ridiculous. I don't know. What are the word use? Not sensitive. Because as long as I've lived here, since 1993, there's been two board meetings every month. Everybody's busy, everybody has things going on. But at a time when we have seemingly unlimited issues to discuss, hey, one time a month to give people a chance to talk. And yeah, email us, talk to us. Some of you are good at that, some of you are not. So let's do something the village board has done, which in the last 30 years has two board meetings. And if there's something comes up during committee meeting and you want to table it, you table it for two weeks, bring it up the next time. Do your good elements, and you vote on it. I'm looking for two meetings a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And then Kim Grant is on deck.
Good evening. Kelly Bento, Germantown. So I have to say, last meeting was definitely quite entertaining. Gave me a lot of information to think about. We got a really good commercial about a lot of diversity, equity, and inclusion statements because of the names that were published for that particular meeting. The other thing that I thought was kind of interesting is one of the teachers that stood up and talked about indoctrination. And she went so far as to say, if I had that kind of power for your kid, their English homework would be done, and it would be perfect. What these teachers fail to realize is that their words hold weight in the classroom with these students. Their students trust them, and they believe the words that they say. Their job is to teach, to be neutral. It is not to impart their opinions. They are to teach history as it is written in the books. Yes, we need to engage critical thinking. We need to not share opinions. We learned last week from Kim that her family was enslaved. I'm sorry, Kim, that your family had to go through that. I think that is really unfortunate. I don't agree with it. However, I came across something that gave me pause. So it's a meme, and it says, "She owes us apology for Pearl Harbor." And it's a presumed Asian descent girl. I would say maybe one or two years old, sitting in the sand. And it's like, that sounds awfully ridiculous, isn't it? Why does she owe us? She's innocent. It's time we get past all of this. None of us in this room own slaves. We need to treat each other with kindness. Let's move past it. Let's stop bringing that up. Because teaching the CRT in classrooms is furthering that divide. We're not looking to keep this division. We want to move forward. The teachers in this district are paid by our tax dollars. They are not paid to teach division, and we know that it's being taught in the school district. And we've got the policy, truce amendment, called invasive procedures. I should have had a conversation with my children that unless I am standing there giving permission, nobody inserts anything, nobody removes anything, period. I said, I don't care. They told you, your mom said it's okay. Unless I am standing here or on the phone with you, it doesn't happen. Don't go back on the masks. Don't do it. It's not fair to the kids. It's already a problem for them to sit and focus. The masks make it even worse. So when we're looking at all of these things, the board has a job to stand up and do. We're talking about transparency tonight. I have cameras in all the classrooms. Don't put them on the students, put them on the teachers. Teachers are meant to be watched, parents are meant to be watched every time during the day, and there's no question. The reason this is all coming up is because the parents were at home watching the teachers. It's time for the teachers to be watched. That is, there's no question. Thank you.
Okay, next is Richard Bank.
It's pronounced "biop."
Yeah, sorry.
Yes. Well, I've written this school board to read those on concerning CRT and its Marxist roots. And also, I viewed some of the videos of the meetings where there was even discussion over it. And I watched out. The school board members were intimidated a little and talked down to a lot of people at this microphone. And it really disturbed me to see that happen instead of seeing the school board showing respect for the positions you guys hold. Now, the thing that, you know, that was tremendous controversy about CRT, why are we putting our children in a position to decide about CRT? We, as adults, have problems deciding if it's good or bad. Why are we putting our children in that position to decide? It doesn't make sense. Equip them for jobs. Equip them with math, reading, writing, arithmetic. Our scores, as was stated, are dropping in the basic areas. Our standardized tests are not testing on CRT in the cancel culture movement. The other thing, I've always heard said, "Don't connive a problem unless you come up with solutions." I sent you all an email concerning a website called Wall Builders. And it is excellent material about American presidents, the founding of this country, and the moral basis of this country. And also some religious stuff about religion and politics were mixed together. They were not separate. It's a false concept. I didn't get a response from any one of you guys. I don't even know who read it. I'm disappointed. You know, what am I supposed to do to know if you read it or not? That's all I have to say.
Alex Hardy.
Hi, Alex Hardy from Colgate. I actually, I don't have a ton to say tonight, thankfully. Just a couple of musings, I suppose. One, I just, I've been finding it interesting that, you know, we, the people sitting in this room and the rest of the community, we elect a school board, and we delegate an amount of authority and responsibility to you over the education and in some cases, really the guardianship of our kids. And we do that. It's part of the system. And when we catch wind of something that we don't like with what's happening in the district, maybe it's not even something that the board is doing, but that the administration, the teaching staff, or whomever is doing. We catch wind of it, we bring it up and make us think about it. We just, we're greeted with these indignant responses like, oh my gosh, you know, why? Why are you guys having to listen to a bunch of parents? I mean, what kids? Why is that? You know, a lot of us are doing this, or some of us are doing this, have our kids in these schools, because we don't have time to teach them. We don't have time to keep an eye on what our kids are being taught all the time, on how they're being treated and how they're being directed. And that's why we have a school board. That's why we elect a school board to oversee an administration and oversee the teaching staff. So if we're going to have to spend all of our time reading into what the district is doing, poring over these slide presentations, and critical reasoning materials and whatever, why are our kids even at these schools? You know, why aren't we homeschooling or something like that, which is what I actually am? So just an example, I saw on the agenda for later tonight, there's discussion on some material from a little Lucy Culkins. And it's a reading and writing program. It may be the most innocuous thing out there, may be the best writing program out there. Stephen King and Rollins and all them. I don't know. But I find it very interesting that I spent like five seconds Googling this Lucy Culkins and found a number of interesting things. One, she's known for believing that her educational material should be a vehicle for promoting social justice and advocacy in students. Why does that belong in a writing program or a reading program? I also noticed that she's vacillated quite a bit recently on the whole idea of whole language type reading, you know, reading that doesn't actually work, and real reading education based on phonics. And she's going back and forth on these things. It seems like she's coming back to the right side. But my point is, why? Maybe someone on the board had read it, and that is going to bring that up. I'd be pleasantly surprised. But why do I feel like I need to do that search when we've elected the board to exercise that sort of board assignment? So that's, I just, I hope everyone is realizing that that's, everyone here is realizing that that's why we have the board here and that if things aren't going the way, if things in the district aren't going the way that we feel the board should be making them go, there's plenty of other options. You know, that's starting to happen. So thank you.
Thank you all. That was the last speaker I did. Moving on to item four, moving on to minutes, June 21st, 2021, board evaluation, June 21st, 2021, closed session, and July 12th, 2021, closed session. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the June 21st board minutes, correcting board member Pollak's name on line 2 and 8. And also approve the closed session. It is from June 21st and July 12th.
Sorry. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss the names of public speakers being in the minutes, and those names are not in there. I, perhaps I was the only one that thought it was clear on Monday's board review retreat that those names were going to be published, you know, for all the speakers. And they're not in there. So what's going on?
I don't recall that discussion, but I remember Brett and I had a conversation, and we got mainly complaints about the names being published. So we thought going forward, we would be consistent and not publish the names on all documents. Because that's, it's still a public record. The green sheet can still be requested. So I guess we could go either way, but we want to be consistent was the point.
Well, let's put this be consistent for the time before that, so that, you know, not just Congress or out there, for all to see, my job of friends. It's not okay.
Yeah, so initially, what I heard Brett say was, it's a public meeting, and all names should be published. So I kind of felt, oh, great, let's do it.
I guess we'll leave it up to the board. We'll have to bring that up as an agenda item, but it's up to the board to decide going forward if the name should be.
We could bring it up as an agenda item, but I don't think we can approve the minutes tonight. Unless we approve them with a change if we choose to go forward printing the names. I think they should all be in there. I really do. Otherwise, that green sheet gets lost in the ether. So I'd be okay to approve the minutes as written this evening. And if we bring it back as an agenda item, you know, that we can vote on to make sure that they're always in there.
Is it possible to amend the minutes?
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion to, because you're talking about the minutes, so we can easily.
Okay, so let's approve with the printing, excuse me, the names from, you know, the 21st of June, as I recall.
Okay, we will amend the motion to include the names from the last meeting. You'll accept that?
Yes.
And still the second?
Sorry.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
A pause. I pass it. Item five, reports and updates. Board of Education retreat update. Um, Brett, I'll let you go first on that one.
Sure. So on, uh, July 12th, we had a, a board working session and, uh, talked about a couple different things and I'll, I'll mention a few and then anyone can, can share anything you'd like from that meeting. Um, you know, I started with a recap of, of 2020, 2021 school year. Um, the, the board spent a good amount of time talking about our goals for, for 2021, 2022, and, um, they're still working on those and, um, we should have a draft copy to share at the, at the, um, August board meeting. And we talked about, uh, one of our policies, controversial issues and, um, I guess sharpening that, that policy. Um, we just talked about two of the bigger things, not a lot of time on it, but just our, our 4K for 2022, 2023, as well as our virtual charter school in that same year. We also spent time talking about, um, kind of what a working, a working definition for the school, um, around diversity, um, equality, equity, and inclusion. And so we're, we're working through that right now. That would come, uh, come here and, uh, actually most likely vote a policy first and then would, um, the policy committee then come to the full board. Anything, anything else that anyone would like to share?
I think you covered it. Um, and talking about board goals, we are revisiting those. We're looking at different metrics and different ideas, um, as far as board goals as well as transparency to the community. That's something we're talking about as well. And we have a couple of things on the agenda we'll be talking about later, um, to those points. So we'll get to that in a little bit. One other thing is the, uh, points of contact chain of command in order for parents to have clarity on who they should contact in case of an incident. We put that on our website and we also are confirming a meeting with the Village of Germantown on August 30th. So we're trying to work that in as well. So something else we're, Brett, do you like?
Hey, Brian, uh, after the, uh, Monday Board of Any Retreat, I thought, I was under the impression that you and Brett were going to work on the, uh, three points that Sarah had mentioned, and I think they have, are already in print, uh, on our website. You and Brett were gonna work on that?
That is correct. We are moving that forward to Policy Committee. Um, we didn't think it had to be a board motion to go to Policy, so we're gonna send that directly to Policy.
Okay.
Along with, it looks like we're gonna have a couple other policies to look at, um, going forward, um, that were brought up this evening as well.
And, and do you believe that's gonna go into the teacher handbook, maybe student handbooks also, or?
We talked about that. That could be coming out when the handbook comes out this fall. That can be included with the handbook material. Um, it's not something we need to do today, but before the handbook comes up for the rest of the year, or beginning of the new school year, that's something to look at as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Item D, curriculum and website update. Mr. Salford.
Yep, so, um, on our, our website, uh, we started putting our curriculum, um, on our courses and, um, this isn't obviously everything. We just started doing this. Um, I know it's been in the, in the works for a little bit gathering the information, but I'll just, as an example, um, if you go to elementary mathematics, it should take you to each of the grade, um, uh, curriculum pieces for, for the Bridges Math. Um, and we'll, we'll do this for, um, for middle school, for high school courses as well. It won't happen overnight, but, um, we'll start putting, putting our curriculum right there on the website, so, um, and also the standards, the Wisconsin academic standards, which, um, we follow. So those are on here as well. So it hopefully is a one-stop shop for our curriculum, so.
So what you're showing is currently on the website and we'll be adding to that.
Correct. Okay.
I know we talked about this. I think this is a good first step going forward, first transparency, but we heard comments not only tonight, but, uh, in previous board meetings about in-service training for staff. We may want to include, um, sessions on that as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I know some of the, the comments today, um, talked about in-service, but, um, some of the things that they're talking about were actually during a staff meeting, which is different than a district initiative, um, in-service.
I would say, I would say, uh, make it very broad. It covers everything. Cast the white net, so.
Okay. Item C, return to school update. Mr. Salford.
Yep, so we're, oops, we're back here somewhere. Um, the, the continuous school planning and as we move into, um, this school year, you know, part of us, um, were hopeful that we could just have a, a normal school year. Um, we're still hoping for that. Um, but like last year, we have to be flexible, we have to be adaptable. Um, we have to kind of monitor the, the situation of what's, what's going on around us and, and react to it. And so, um, there'll be changes at some point. I, I just, I'm anticipating and not knowing what those are, but knowing that we may have to, um, adjust what we're doing or how we're, how we're doing. But, um, right now, our current plan is that we, we do start this school year with masks optional that was voted on, um, back in, end of May, early June. Um, you know, if, if a child is, um, in close contact with a positive case, we'll let, let those, let that family know. And like we ended this school year, um, the family can decide, you know, what they'd like to do with their child at that, at that point. Um, and in general, students will be in-person for learning. I mean, we do have a, um, a virtual option for, um, for some. Uh, we have, that's limited, uh, numbers, but in general, it's, everybody's in, um, in-person. Right now, we do not plan on offering vaccines. I know there's, um, some districts are offering that and there was some state, um, funds to set that up. We, we don't have the personnel to do it, but, and also, um, talking to our school nurse is something that, um, she was not in favor of either. And also, um, the COVID testing at the school. Um, again, it's about personality, no there is funds for that. But, and what that would do is if a, if a child had symptoms and the parent said, well, I don't think they have it, they could get tested on the spot negative, they could, you know, go back to, um, go back to class. Where right now, if a parent would like to test their child, they would just take them to, to their, their place of choice. Um, obviously, just like last year, we're asking families to monitor their child's health and keep them home if they're not feeling well. You know, we're gonna continue to encourage, you know, proper hand washing and, um, just, uh, personal hygiene, which is good no matter what year it is. Um, and, uh, we have a current policy that's been in place for, pre my time, it's been around for a long time. And, um, the district policy is when you had 30% absentee in a, a class or grade level, you shut down. So if it was a, a norovirus or if it was a flu year, um, what we're planning on doing is if a grade level or class reaches 15% absentee rate, uh, due to illnesses, we will notify the families in those classes or grade levels, just so they know, so they know, hey, things are, are picking up. Um, they might, um, ask their child to wear a mask at that point or to make sure that they're washing their hands better or whatever it may be. But we wanna, um, just let the families know that numbers are increasing if they are in a particular grade level or class. Um, the, the last piece, right now, our instruction, um, will not be concurrent. In last year, um, for middle school and high school, a teacher had a group of kids that they were working with virtually at the same time they had kids, um, in front of them. Um, and right now, the plan is that they would have, um, the kids in front of them. And if a student was absent for any length of time, that they would work out a learning plan with that teacher. And we're working on, on general guidelines around that, kind of as we speak. So that will, um, come forward at, at our next meeting too. So that's the, the current plan. Any questions or comments?
I think one of the burning questions might be we are not requiring students to have a vaccine, correct?
Correct. That's, that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Well, keep moving. Item D, public access recorded. Mr. Salford.
Yep. But I'm gonna hand this off to, um, Ms. Alton.
Um, I wanted to give an update on our public access usage. Um, just to clarify, this is the public access, um, for the field house, the pool, and the, um, fitness center. This is not like facility rental public access, just so you know. Um, you, thank you very much. Um, the, as you know, the, um, public, um, access was open on May 15th, 2019. So this is a two-year review to just show where we're at. Um, it's open 12 months a year, so it's open during the summer, uh, Monday through Friday. Um, it is open in the AM for an hour and a half, so from 5:30 to 7:00 AM. And that's the pool, the fitness center, and the field house, as I stated before. And then, um, Monday through Thursday in the PM, um, it's the fitness center and the pool. The field house is open on Fridays due to, um, sports most likely or, um, facility usage. Um, current, uh, the fee to access these areas is, um, staff and students, um, have zero fee. Um, the community members have a $2 fee and then non-community members have a $4 fee. And I believe this was set by the board when we opened in May of 2019. Um, I created some charts just so the board and the community can see, um, when our areas are being used. So, um, time, obviously in the afternoon, you can see, um, that it is used more than the evenings. Um, those are the green bars on there. Um, you can see that the first part of the chart is the first year it was open. And then the second part of the chart is the second year and the usage has increased drastically. And then the three months, and then those are the COVID ones that we closed. Um, but, so I was very surprised and happy about the, the usage of our, uh, three areas in our high school. Um, by visitor type, this is just breaking down the four visitor types that I explained in the beginning, the community, the non-community, the staff, and the students. And again, you can see that our students are using this. It is great that our students are using this. I'd love to see the community, um, and the staff using this more, so maybe we can have a little discussion on how we can increase the usage in other areas, um, for the other groups. Uh, by location, again, um, the fitness center, um, supervises itself on all the other areas. Um, the field house probably because it's not open on Fridays or on the weekend, it might be used more, but we are using them for other reasons. So, um, facility or, um, public access to those are decreased because of that. And then the pool, sometimes the pool is open. It'll intensively have a, a lifeguard that's able to work. And then we also have facility, uh, sorry, facility renters using those spaces as well, so it can't be used. But the fitness center is used, um, as you can see on the chart, um, the majority of the time. Um, the next two slides are, um, breaking down the revenue versus the expenditures. The revenue in the last two years was about $4,430. I know this isn't a, a revenue meter, that's not the purpose of this, um, but I wanted to make sure that over the years, we are, um, looking at both the revenue and the expenditure side, which makes, uh, about an average income of about $200. I did take out the three months that, um, we were closed due to COVID, so I took the average of, for the two years divided by 23 months instead of the 26 months to get the 200, approximately $200 a month, um, income. On the other side, the costs, um, in the morning, um, well, they're staffing. So in the morning, we have three people, which is a lifeguard, um, uh, monitor at the fitness center to monitor to make sure that the people in the fitness center are using the equipment appropriately. And then, um, there's a supervisor, a door person that, um, checks IDs and takes money if, if there's a fee involved. And then in the evening, there's two to three people depending on the lifeguard, um, availability. Um, and again, the, the lifeguard, the monitor of the fitness center, and then the door supervisor. And then there's some minimal, um, equipment and supplies, cleaning supplies, obviously, to make sure that, um, the areas are cleaned. And then the pool equipment, which I believe we have to purchase anyway, so, um, that's not actually an additional cost. Um, and then the average annual expense is about 34,000, $350.
Brett, you have a question? The, um, I was, couple slides back to the students that were using it, like the, the early morning, 5:30 to 7:00. Are, were those students part of, um, like a athletic team or group, or were they just individuals using it?
Sure. They could be part of athletic team, but it's not the coach bringing them in.
Okay.
So if they're there, they're, they're, they're on their own.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and then so just to give a quick summary of, again, what I just stated, um, the most popular users are obviously our students. The least popular are the non-community members, which makes sense. Um, the location most used is the fitness center and the least is the pool. Um, the most popular is in the evenings, vice versa. The least popular would be in the morning. And then the total revenue is about $4,400. And the total expense over the two-year period is about $69,000. Um, this is a report that's gonna be brought to the board annually. I think it's important that the board knows what's happening, um, for public access. Um, I just wanted to have a discussion regarding the fees, the hours of operation, if we want to increase advertising or where we, you know, currently advertise, and if the locations we want to continue to keep, even if there's low usage in some of the areas. So there's, there's not a motion, it's just a discussion and, um, regarding the information that I just provided, if there's anything that the board wants to talk about.
I'd like to see more information going out to the families about the community usage and they can pass that along. I don't know that we can get to every community member, but through the parents, through the families, I think you can get out to the community quite readily. Let them see a little bit more on that.
Yeah, and we knew when we started this, uh, two years ago, that this was not gonna be a moneymaker. We just wanted to create the opportunity for the community to use the facility and see that they paid for it. Um, but I got a question. I know the hours are somewhat limited or very restrictive, 5:30 AM to 7:00 AM, um, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and that's money through Thursday. Have we, at least over the summer months, have we considered or talked about expanding that to include the weekends, uh, for the pool and for other facilities?
We have not talked about that and I don't mean to put Billy Joe on the spot right now. Um, I know we do have facility renters in some of our spaces that might limit, um, the opening to access up, but that's something we could consider. Um, we could look at the last, the history of who's renting what areas at what time, especially during the summer, and see if we can expand those hours.
And even if we're renting the facility to a third party, maybe we keep two lanes open to the pool so that the community can get in there anytime they want to. So, and also fitness center too. And I don't know how, what the workaround on that would be, I have no idea. But expanding the hours of operation for the community, I think you're gonna get more people using it, so.
Other thing I was thinking about is back when we had the other pool, we had swim lessons for the community, for the kids around here, so something to think about as well.
Did we have the, the swim lessons or we just used our?
I, I don't know if the rec had the swim lessons here or if it was the school, you know?
It was Park and Rec.
Park and Rec.
Yeah, my, my kids participated in that in the old days. Very cost-effective too, under Park and Rec at the time.
We also had our own swim lessons for summer school. So it was a two-week, uh, American Red Cross for our students. We just were not able to offer all of the levels of swim this summer because we weren't able to find the instructors. Thank you.
Do you hold any rec classes? I think I would love to go there. I don't know. So maybe you can talk to Park and Rec and maybe they're there. Thanks, Doc.
Yeah, one other thing I had on, uh, public access, I saw in the next hour, I have that somebody is complaining about the high school not having the track open and you'll hear a little bit why that was. Um, and I'm sure if they were talking about Germantown, they didn't say it specifically, but our track is currently being redone, so that's why the track was closed. So if anybody wants to get that information out, that would be helpful as well.
Brett, can I follow up on that? We had some requests for, um, areas of the track to be used during public access. One of the reasons it was not considered is there's nobody out there for supervision. Um, so depending on what they were using the track for, we're, all our areas are pretty supervised. The front door, um, supervises the field house, we have lifeguards in the pool, and we have, uh, monitor in the fitness center. So if we want to open up the track or the track, um, I believe there's a long jump pit there, um, that we might want to consider, um, a supervisor out there if we were gonna do that.
Okay, great, okay. Ms. Balfour, yeah, I was just gonna add the, I think-
Ms. Alton, yeah, I was just gonna add the, I think the one key piece is spreading the word, you know, looking at the graphs. For, for the most part, for more recently, I suppose, we're closer to a hundred people. Or is that unique, or is that just actual visitors?
The, the?
The usage by visitor type.
Usage by visitor type, that is, so that's per month. So there, I mean, some of the high ones you see, there are five hundred, six hundred people.
So I, I think we can, we can try to figure out a way to spread the word. Even if it's Facebook, you know, we have, we have means to get the word out in a cost-effective manner. So, you know, I don't recall how many likes or follows or whatever on Facebook we have, but I seem to recall it's a couple thousand that start sharing what it is. Because, I mean, our fees are fairly reasonable, all things considered, compared to other locations that are available. Obviously, the timing is probably a bit of a hindrance for some because we would actually get more, more traffic.
Very good. I think hopefully, since people are hunkering down in their house and they're out talking to their neighbors, they can spread the word through the actual word of mouth.
All right, we've gone down to six. Discussion and action to approve AP government and politics, Mr. Stelzner. Yes, I want to hand this over to Mrs. O'Brien.
Sure. Good journey, ma'am. I brought forward the proposal to add AP government and politics to our course description beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And as I stated previously, is that the textbook for this course would be approved. Give the courses approved. The textbook would be approved actually next summer after the training, so that we have the most current, most recent textbook to offer. So that would be brought before the board. So I just want the board to understand that it would be the course and not the textbook that you were approving this meeting.
Time. The background mentions a hundred hours are needed for curriculum development. But doing a little bit of research, it looks like the AP makes their own curriculum. So can you explain why we need a hundred hours of development if they're handing us that curriculum?
Correct. So we would offer the hundred hours. Most courses start at sixty hours for curriculum development, so I would just have to look and have that in relation to this course. So it would not be the hundred hours that would be approved. So it'd be probably, I'm guessing around thirty to forty hours that would be approved for this course.
Right. What type of course will this be? Is it going to be, it's a history course, but is it going to teach history in the seventeen seventy-six project style, or is it going to be a sixteen nineteen type of course?
Well, and that's why I would like the textbook to be, you know, approved and make sure that we have transparency with the textbook that would be. But online, if you go to the AP website, you can see a overview of the courses or the topics that are studied within this course. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the sixteen nineteen project, as an example.
The concern I have is I often judge speakers on the use of a term. And in Unit One, it mentions foundation of American democracy. Does anybody on the board know what's wrong with that statement? What is it? We're a constitutional republic. We're a republic. So I, I've got a big problem with this. You know, the board's been accused of, five years ago, approving a course that included CRT. If that was in the course five years ago, we certainly didn't know what it was and didn't understand it. We certainly know it today. And this course might be perfectly fine, but that first Unit One, there, I, I don't see anywhere where it says republic here. We're a republic, we're a nation of laws. We are not a democracy. And when I, when I hear anyone in the news media say we're a democracy, I'm like, that person's a moron. They don't know what they're talking about. We're a nation of laws. So I'd be okay. You don't want to hit with this this evening. But I want to see the book, and I want to see it weeks or months in advance. And I want a copy of it. Because I'm tired of what's happened to the board the last few months, you know, being used as a scapegoat for, well, we've been teaching CRT in the school system for years. You can get teachers in here telling us that. So if we can get the book, and we can each review it, I'd be okay with this. Otherwise, the answer is no. You know, we don't need an additional AP course if we don't know what's in it. And if that book only mentions democracy and it doesn't mention republic, the answer is no, in my opinion. Of course, I don't get to decide for the rest of the board, but I think the board knows what they need to do.
Ms. Alton, that's the, that's the key to this, because it's what would be up for motion this evening would be just approval of the course. I remember Ms. O'Brien, she showed me an example listing of possible books, and I believe it was a full two sides. So the, the expectation is this would just be approval of the course. And because this would be for twenty-two, twenty-three, when, when the next iteration of the book listing would be out there and where the actual books are selected, that's when it would be revisited by this board to see if we actually truly approve it.
Has this gone to the curriculum committee versus going to the full board right now?
It's been to the full board last month.
Yeah. We may wonder, and I would agree with you, we are a republic. But I'm looking at the course content, the different units in here, and the descriptions. Yes, we need to talk more about the Declaration of Independence. We need to talk about the separation of powers at the federal level. We need to talk about the Bill of Rights. We need to talk about the First Amendment, the Second Amendment, the Supreme Court. This is all good stuff. But I would just say that I would like to see the textbook, but I would rather have it be vetted by the curriculum committee first. I know this board has talked about, in the spirit of transparency, about, you know, getting more community engagement on curriculum and transparency, getting more eyes on things. I don't think we're here, we're there right now for this course content. But certainly, I would encourage us to, I, I, maybe we could put a pause on this right now and shoot it over to curriculum so that it can promptly be edited. Just my thoughts. But I, I like the, the different units, how segments, the black and the republic being identified here. And I can't believe that came to the board. We're not that big in here.
I can believe curriculum committee did that, that's correct. Uh, we included this topic at our last meeting all four minutes ago.
Oh, I missed it. I must have missed that.
I believe there's more material here tonight than what was in the curriculum committee, if I remember right. You know, so that's why this comes up now.
Got, got it. I understand correctly.
And then I, I agree about one hundred percent. All these topics are great. It all depends on, you know, how they're taught. These can be taught as positives, which I believe is how they should be taught, or they can be taught, taught as negatives. You know?
Well, I'm not too concerned about that, especially once the policy committee gets the, um, the language, the, the statement that the board put out a couple of weeks ago. Once they get those three items, we put that in the policy, and the board proves on that, and that'll go into the handbook, that'll go into everything that we do. And we will hold you accountable if, if our staff is who are against that. So I'm not at all concerned about that.
I'm, I'm concerned about it because it's, it's happening all the time.
Well, that's the first one.
That's the first one.
You know, so take the Bill of Rights, for example. You know, some people think it's a document that's only second to the Bible when it comes to the history of the world. There's others that say, well, it was written by slave owners. Therefore, it's completely invalid, and we should throw it out. And to those people, I say, well, we wouldn't have a country today if we just threw it out. We can't just throw a Bill of Rights.
Okay, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the AP's government and politics course with the expectation that the next iteration of the book list be vetted by the curriculum committee prior to bringing it over to the board next year.
I will second that. I, I hope that means we actually get copies of the board.
We will make sure of that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item B, discussion and action to approve female CTE course. Mr. Stelzner.
And what's up with this ride out there? So this is another course where I would like the board to make a decision about moving forward because it's going to involve a lot of our local businesses and manufacturers, and they are pressured to make this course what we want it to be. So really, we're talking about an all-female career and technical education or CTE course beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, hoping that we can draw more females in particular to the manufacturing, engineering sector. And so what we're designing is kind of a core part exploratory, where they would be looking at woodworking, manufacturing, automotive, and engineering, and again, working on problems that some of our local businesses and partnerships would be able to provide us, so that there would be kind of adult mentorship, if you will, in those local manufacturing and businesses as part of this course. And I'd like to hold that meeting this fall, if possible, and making sure that we have actionable steps that we can put in place to create this course and be able to run it for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve planning for the all-female CTE course beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, including meeting with local businesses and manufacturers, design learning experiences for our students.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I, I love the idea. The only thing that's come to my attention by some parents is we're segregating the students. And I, I support the idea because I think maybe, you know, anything to get young ladies into shop-type classes and this sort of thing, an area that's typically dominated by men, I think is a good idea. And I did run the question via email, asked Tim Mearin and John Stahoyak. I asked them, how do you respond to those parents that say, hey, the young ladies, the female students should just suck it up and just take these classes with the boys in school? So I, I do approve of this because, like I said, anything to get, you know, young ladies into these types of classes is great. But that question does need to be answered, I think. You know, so parents, some of them might be here, say, hey, you know, the real world is going to include men in the workplace. You need to know how to deal with men in the workplace, so you might as well start learning in high school. So I don't know if there's an answer tonight. I'm not trying to, you know, really, you were putting you on the spot. I actually hope Tim or John would have been here tonight, but since they're not up at the microphone, I'm just mentioning that that question has come up.
Brad?
Brett, I think this was a great idea. My light concern would be to just pass the Title IX test, which prohibits sex-based discrimination in any school. Because if the, I, my presumption is the board will approve this, but if we're saying all female and a male wants to attend, we better be ready to cross that bridge.
Yes, and I'm actually working with CISA One and some of the area directors who have offered these types of classes to see, because that is one of my questions as well as we started down this pathway, was the Title IX. So I think that also needs to be part of the planning conversation and planning for scenarios, just like the ones that you had mentioned.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I propose? That passes. Moving on to item C, discussion and action to approve leadership and mindset course. Ms. O'Brien.
Sure, I'm going to invite Jake Davis to come. He is the one who is proposing this whole course, and again, starting with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So I'd like to invite him to say a few words.
Thank you, Brendan. I appreciate the board for having me tonight and considering this course. Just to get a little background, for the past nine, ten years, so I've actually, with my football program and teaching, I've been there through COVID in the offseason. If anybody wants to sign up with me and take this program, we come actually at six fifteen in the morning, twice a month in the offseason. I believe what the boys have to do is write me a letter, sign a commitment, just to say that they want to do it, and if they do that, they're in. I do it juniors and seniors, basically, because most of those guys can drive. I don't, we're on parents' day to drive them that early morning. So I try to make it so they can adhere for me a little bit. I'd like to do it with all kids. It's kind of hard for the younger, but I do it there. But all of those years, I've seen, and I've kind of revamped it. I've learned and grown through that whole process myself. You all have seen that before, so I've seen some of those young men. I'll care about Rob, one of the media, a number of years ago, and talk about his experience with that program. And what went to him and his family and the struggle that they had. And the struggle, and it really was a struggle for students, really, and just how he processed through not becoming a valedictorian. And then this year, I actually got to hear one about what one of the young men that's with the program speak as a valedictorian, what he learned from that program through the COVID time, and what he did is actually through COVID. We actually had that in med weekly through this program that had. So my vision was always take the program and put it at a bigger scale. So it's actually, you know, a number of months ago, when I heard certain class go to the middle school, I'm thinking, this might be a great opportunity to kind of, kind of build upon that, bring up from the middle school to high school. So I heard Brenda looking to actually reduce this app and kind of build upon that. I'm actually looking for that opportunity to be able to build on that and partner with that and then build into the ACP. So there's a whole bunch of things that are just right timing things that I'm very excited about to really bring this to the high school, including some of the things we're doing. I'm not sure how many of you know the pop talks that we're doing here as well, kind of doing TED Talks that we're doing, the resource for bringing mindset principles in. So there are really a lot of really interesting things that are happening here that this has been very well. So basically, that's kind of the backstory for, for where this all comes. It's a lot long, a lot of process, a lot of things that have been going on. But this is the class that really starts with self, and self-sermon for these students that will take this course. They're going to work through, because my, you know, all my work is with this and all the mentors I've worked with. You really have to learn to be a leader yourself before you can, you know, the other. I think I really agree with that. You can't really lead without, you can't lead through life and do that. So we work on that, you know, and work for everybody's, why, why they do the things they do, and work through that. And that might be all the work that's on makes for the class, really, work on how they can better be a leader themselves. And then we work through, we're a different character, there's a lot of these that should work, you know, one being big group and growth mindset that our district, you know, really, you know, grabbed onto. And then we work for different things. The two big leadership styles that I work through, and the program I work, is servant leadership, which I believe are right, I think are right for me, because they're right to serve. When we get out into community projects and build some things, that would be our big project. For this semester, we'd be to work through our leadership styles through servant leadership. Work on taking a big project, finding a great place we can, you know, in our own community, be able to serve others. Through that, we work on, then the next type of leadership is transformational leadership, or how we can help others become better leaders of themselves, better leaders of themselves. And then all of our incorporated mindsets was that they could use the resources we utilize, and they would create their own leadership profile, see how they can, you know, improve, learn, grow through the whole process. And, you know, I would do what I call a targeting meeting with each one of them. We'd work on all those things and see where they can use that for their own success and kind of continue on from there. So I'm really excited for this to be an opportunity. You know, as I teach my son, we do a, you know, a problem, we do a, kind of change. It can tell me a time and a chance, so I'm hoping to do that for others in the summer here. So I thank you guys all for this opportunity. Hopefully, you can work towards this. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer those.
Jake, is this, what, what grade level would the kids be in also, is it males and females?
Yes, it's anybody who'd like to do it. You know, we got to kind of work and see, you know, it can really be open to anybody. I'm, I'm open. I'm open, when I've done this with, you know, the students, it's really a spectrum, and I like to have as many people, you know. Typically, I, you know, in the, let's just, we always do the football, you know, everybody doesn't hear from comes in football, they say, these are my top kids that do it. I like to open to all walks of life. I like to get into people who have no leadership experience, that top leader, be leader in there, because I think we can all learn from each other, and that, and you might get, you know, all different people that look differently in there, because I think it's really about a journey for yourself in this leadership program. It really is about whoever you're at on that spectrum, because you just get a little bit better wherever you are. So you could have, my vision for it would be that you might have someone who doesn't consider himself a leader that comes in there, who just gets a little bit better in their own right, that can start to lead themselves better. Or you might also have a top leader in there who can learn to lead better in their own way, each one of those individuals. So it's going to be a really good spectrum. We can work that out a little bit if you want to do, you know, individual grade levels, but I really think it could be a kind of, it could be a serious spectrum, we can all work together.
Matt?
Coach, I think this is wonderful, and thank you for being here.
Yes.
I'm reading the background material, and hopefully those that are watching have read the background material. You know, identify the student, there's a high need for a class such as this in the world we live in today.
Absolutely.
You know, we, the pandemic for the last year and a half, and all the pressures that had on communities, moms and dads and parents, all the challenges and the roller coaster ride that they took, I think you're spot on. But when I read the course content, trust, loyalty, commitment, discipline, pride, integrity, community service, I think you're spot on, and hats off to you for doing this, we need this.
Yes.
We need it yesterday, not, not.
It's been happening over here, and we're all doing this, I think, unintentionally. It's just about being more intentional, I think, a little bit more on this.
Yeah, and I like the gratitude, and maybe you could blow that out a little bit to be humble and empathy behind me nice.
Yeah, there's all work to that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Absolutely, yes, that's, I appreciate that, and it's just, and I think with the mental health aspect too, this helps a lot, gratitude, mental health, if people do more grateful for these things, I think you can see a lot of change.
That's pretty cool, thanks for doing this.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien, would you accept people on a new course?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I'm more than willing to sit down and enjoy a hot talk, as you can tell, I'm passionate, I talk to all this today, so people coming to stop talking, so this is how I do it, so.
Yeah, thank you, Jake, for this. Is there, is there any textbook at all that you can use, or no?
There's two books I have on there listed, Energy Boss is one that I've used for the number of years, it's a great book, you know, it goes through ten lessons that he, that he uses, John Gordon's a great author, author, that does a lot of good things with leadership and those kinds of things. The other one, there is Chocolate Cherry Water, but they do an action, Mr. Stulson, I first met, he brought that book up before I said anything about, you know, he trained in classes, the organization there, there's Lucas Jaden, his business partner, Dr. Matt Gatto, that's actually doing mindset mission. He's actually, Lucas Jaden's a mentor of mine through this whole process, he's worked with different organizations like Arizona, he just worked with the, the LA Dolly, you know, on the next World Series, he scored for those guys, he was kind of a, a lot of bigger organizations, he was the opposite of Lucas, so I've been with those guys, I meet with those guys five, even almost, and like twice a year, or this is in the process to talk about everything that's going on with this, so, you know, there's a bunch of other guys who just, I kind of collaborate with, so there are those two books that we kind of, there are a bunch of other that I could use through the process. I really try to look at the group and see what the needs are too, so I kind of individualize and what I can, I can say classroom, but I don't necessarily, if there is a need up there, I try to seek that out through the resources, if you know what I mean.
Okay, great, thank you, this sounds great. I apologize, I read so much material in the last twenty-four hours, I remember reading those book names.
Yeah, absolutely, there's plenty, and things I do by monster job talking about, I don't know.
Yeah, I think this is a reclass, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Learn, Grow, Lead, Leadership and Mindset Course beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second. Further discussion?
I need to say something to Mr. Davis, I'll call you a coach. I really want to say that you're one of my heroes in the district. You have a hugely positive impact on all three of my sons, one in particular, and I want to thank you for that. You are really one of the people that gets the job done in this district, and we're greatly appreciated.
I'm glad, thank you.
And on that note, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I know you'll have success, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to I M D, Discussion and Action to Approve A C P Graduate Profile. Ms. O'Brien.
Sure, last month, I talked about how we wanted to take kind of that standard document in two thousand seventeen and make it more of a living document. So this is not a live site yet, this is just kind of the sandbox for what we're looking at with graduate profiles. So we still have the assumption success factors on there, having students know themselves, know how to learn, and know how to work well with others. So those are up on the top. Then we have students knowing themselves of who I am, taking some interest surveys through the site or platform called the Zello site. We want students to be engaging in personal goal setting and reflections, and then also thinking about what they want to be. So the graduate profile does have a requirement that students have a post-high school plan after they graduate. So what they want to be includes some of that job, or includes the career pathway, as well as some of the steps to get them to that point. So, and then how we bridge that is what we offer at Germantown High School to help bridge the students of who they are to where they want to be post-high school. And with the, now, just the passing of the new leadership course, I will add this to that website as well, because I believe that it also shares students for life after high school. And then the bottom section, if you can scroll down just a little bit, is about how do I get there. So the students' roles and responsibilities for this, and what they are going to do as they are entering middle school and preschool, as well as the teacher roles to help support them along the way. So again, this takes that two thousand seventeen document and now makes it from a live document on our website that will be updated here.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the A C P Graduate Profile update for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second. Any discussion? See, none of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to I M D, Discussion and Action to Approve Ed Newties.
So this is the one that we would like to replace the Odyssey program that we currently use for recovery with the Ed Newtie. I know the last time there was a question asked about the budget, and so the increase that we will experience the first year with all the professional development that we would need to make the transition to continue the transfer would be coming out of the teaching and learning budget, but moving forward, then it would be in the high school budget, and we'd be slightly less cost year over year after that first year.
Any questions? I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Ed Newtie contract for the next three years, and a month, have to receive fifteen thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars fifty cents for year one, and seven thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars twenty-five cents for years two and three.
Second. Any discussion? See, none of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on, I have a discussion in action to approve Lucy Cawkins. You get some study.
Sure, these are the materials that I'd like to see used K eight for the writing. And I know there was some discussion during the public comment tonight about Lucy Cawkins' reading, and I would certainly not recommend that at this time. There is some research and things around how she presents the reading fundamentals that I believe we would still need to work through. So the Lucy Cawkins' reading units of study is not what is being proposed for consideration this evening, and so it would be the Lucy Cawkins' units of study, writing, kindergarten through eighth grade.
Yeah, I will say, this came out of radar right away because somebody from the public brought it to our attention through an email, and I did the research and did my homework on that. I actually read through, I think it was seventy pages of the actual curriculum that's being used for the fifth grade, so I thought the higher grade would probably be the most controversial. And there's nothing in there other than letting our kids learn how to write. So I didn't see anything that was not completely innocuous as far as how to do proper writing, and I think that's an important skill that our students need to learn. So I don't have any controversial issues with it that I know of, at least right now. And again, it goes back to how are we teaching it? And I think with the writing, most of the kids are writing about what they know, not what we're telling them to write about, so I think our students will be okay with this.
I did the same thing. The first thing I did see when I started researching this, was already brought up, was the reading topic. As I started to dig deeper with this specific item in question regarding writing, I was very hard pressed to find the things that we would be looking for that would fall under the controversial topics. Ms. O'Brien actually has the material in her office, so it is available for review if anybody out there wants to request anything.
Okay. Any further questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to, let's see here.
Is it something that is just a one-time purchase, or does it change as years progresses?
This would be a one-time purchase. The exception may be that there is one unit within the second grade curriculum that our consultant had already said that it probably isn't, it's a science and report plan unit in second grade, which may not always transfer to skills that second graders would use right away. So they, the consultant recommended, and most schools will switch it out with another what they call if-then units that stand alone. So that would be the only purchase that I can see making even down the road that we would need. So this is not a year-over-year type of purchase, this would be a one-time purchase for the next several years.
Thank you.
And the writing doesn't lead into the reading? Her writing program doesn't lead into her reading program? That's controversial?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So does the writing program lead into the reading program that is so controversial?
No, the reading program units of study and the writing program units of study are two completely different curricular resources.
Can I?
We do not use the reading program.
I'm sorry?
We do not use the reading program.
Correct, at this time, we do not use the reading program.
I'll make a motion to approve the Lucy Cawkins' units of study, writing units for grades K through eight.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Any thought question?
Yeah, I'll just comment that, you know, if we've learned anything over the last several months, is that the buzzword, not the buzzword, we've been preaching that at home, but we need to be better in transparency. And we've talked about putting curriculum on the website, we're going down that path. Will that lead to lesson plans? I'm sure it will. So everything that we're talking about, curriculum, and what we previously talked about, that's going to be out there on the website for moms and dads to see. I mean, we're going to be open in the fall, and guess what? Moms and dads can be in the classroom, sitting in the classroom too, which is a wonderful thing. So that's all good stuff. The engagement that we got going, and the board level of the community, I agree with that, is wonderful. It's all good stuff.
Director?
Mike, yeah, I did look up that name online, and I did not find exactly the same things that Alex mentioned in public speaking, but I did see some issues with the reading portion of it. I did not find anything with the writing portion, so I don't think the two subjects are mutually exclusive, so I have a little concern about it, but if the writing program is okay, I guess I'm okay with it.
The other thing I wanted to mention too with the reading is that it's really the foundational pieces of reading that are being questioned about Lucy Cawkins and her approach teaching it. So, you know, taking a look at K two, for example, would be different than maybe three, five, or the middle school. So it's really that foundations of reading piece, and I think it was mentioned in public comments about that phonics and the phonemic awareness piece, that's really the controversial nature of her work right now. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that as well, so that foundational piece is really what they're talking about with the search.
And I understand too that these units, they don't take a teacher through the whole year, they're, you know, it's chunks, and which means we will have to use our own resources and things that we've done in the past. It's kind of the best of the best we can pull and would put those items kind of in between the units. So part of the process is building a scope and sequence of what will happen in second grade, right, and all the topics that the kids will go through, what happens in third grade, fourth grade, all the way through around, around writing. So it's kind of a blend of some of the units and some of the stuff we've already been doing, so.
Any further discussion? See, none of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to I M D, Discussion and Action to Approve Middle School S E L Curriculum Resources. Ms. O'Brien.
So these are the resources of Second Step, which would be the middle school equivalent of what we're working with for the S E L curriculum at the elementary school. So our elementary K five uses a Second Step program for the social-emotional learning, and then this would be the continuation, sixth through eighth grade, for our middle school Second Step. Again, if you, if all of the topics are online for the scope and sequence of this work for sixth through eighth grade, as well as the elementary school, so if we were to move forward with this adoption, that that would also be added to the website, because you can see all of the curricular topics that are studied with the, in the twenty-six lessons in each grade level in the middle school, as well as the lesson topic individually as well. So that's all on the website.
Any questions? Mike?
Looking this up online, I think we should consider tabling this tonight for, you know, for review by the board. The reason why I say it is, is S E L and Second Step can be used as avenues to teach the equivalent of C R T. So depending on what you find online, you can see that the C R T is not mentioned, but the terms and the things that C R T teaches can be in there. So I think we should go slowly on this and give the board more time. I did some research on it, and I was not comfortable at all with what I was finding, so if I, if I was forced to vote on this tonight, I would vote no, just simply because it's another one of those cases where a few years down the road from now, the board could be faced with a, will the board approve it on July sixteenth, or nineteenth, I'm sorry?
So I have two questions. One, there's the mention of the applications to receive a grant that would help offset some of the costs of this. When would we expect to be hearing whether we receive the grant?
It didn't have a deadline for it, it just had a deadline for the application, it was something that I just applied for, so.
My other question along the lines of Mr. Lil's comment would be, do we have these materials already, or would we be able to get access to take a look a little bit deeper level?
We certainly could. Again, what's on the website, it are the lessons. If you wanted to take a look at each of the individual lessons, we can certainly purchase, it's all online, so it's an online subscription. So we could purchase an online subscription for actual, you know, the actual lesson plan itself, if that's the world's will.
Excuse me, can you please tell me who we applied the grant for? Like, who's paying the grant? Who did you apply to, who did you apply the grant to? Who did you apply to, who did you apply the grant to?
I would have to look, I would have to look that up.
I would be, I'm very curious to see who's funding this? Because nothing else that was presented tonight had grants associated with it that we heard. So who's pushing this to want us to do this? That's what I'm curious about. Who's paying for this?
Obviously we have some questions, I think. We'll take a listen to the next board meeting and we'll get those resources. And I believe in the question, we can get more access to those materials online version of it, they can send to us would be helpful.
Okay, so then just so that the board knows, then I would have to purchase an online subscription, so that may come across as, you know, vouchers, something like that to be able to have access, so.
Do you have a rough idea on what happens?
I think we just need to ask for a trial subscription. And if they want, any business, if they want, if they want their money, we can ask them for it. If they know, then we'll drop.
And again, I would say if the board eventually approves this, and if those three items that were in the public statement get, you know, passed policy to get to the full board, and the board votes on that, that'll, that'll be pushed through policy and the handling. Moms and dads will be in the classroom, curriculum and lesson plans will be online. So I feel very comfortable that we've got the right recipe for success. That's, we'll be missing something possibly, but that's what we're here for, so.
Okay, I'll table that and move on. I have the discussion in action for the sixth grade science resources.
This is just kind of, just discussion and action, just wanting the board to know that we are still piloting some resources for the sixth grade science, as well as the K five science too. We're just doing some pilots. So no decisions in that curriculum have been made at this point, but just so the board is informed that we are piloting those resources. And the same thing with item I, it is just a pilot. Again, we're taking a look at the Bunkson Canal Classroom for grades K six. It's just a pilot for the reading materials for this year.
Okay, so you covered it on my end?
No, sorry, that was two, two other.
Okay, we'll move on to the building committee. Or did anybody have any questions quickly? Okay, building committee, updates from July nineteenth, earlier this evening. Mr. Proctor.
So I would encourage everybody to truly get the details of what was discussed as far as the update that was provided, Mr. Erickson. You talked about a number of different things as far as all the different work going on. There's been a lot at the high school regarding abatement, the track resurfaced, I'll speak a little bit more to that. So the track is being, or is in the process of being resurfaced. The expectation is that it will be done by the end of this month, assuming no weather or other types of obstacles that come into play. In addition, at the high school, LED lighting has been, more work has been done with LED lighting, asphalt seal coating, crack and fill, and striping is going to be in process. He gave us an update on the pool deck. He's still seeing issues, in some cases maybe even worsening. There is a meeting scheduled to go through what can be done to try to find some sort of resolution on this so that we can move forward and get this past us. Other things at the high school, the lower ceiling heating system leak has been fixed under warranty. The soccer field fencing is being looked at for replacement. He's also mentioned here at the P A C, the leak still exists, so there's more work and more research being done to see how we can resolve that issue as well and move forward from that. In addition, as far as at the different schools, at Amy Bell, the infiltration bed, there was an update there with regards to the grass. Everything's working well as far as runoff, but because of the runoff, there's been some issues with the grass growing in, so that's continuing to be looked at. And the Amy Bell masonry project is also, the completed, he still needs to take a look at it for sign-off purposes. At Rockfield, the elevator has been updated and I think it's today that we got the actual inspection approval for that, so that's good to hear. There's going to be some work done at KMS after summer school is over with regards to the sidewalks and some repair work that needs to be done there. That too will be under warranty. And at MacArthur, they've received the gaga wall equipment and with the help of Mr. Abeyn's and also MacArthur PTA, the gaga wall pit will be built within the next few months.
Any questions?
Tracy, I was sitting in the back of the senior building committee, and I do have a couple of comments, especially with specific Amy Bell and also the PAC. We should be having leaks in the PAC and the retention pond or whatever we're calling it, I think we called it what time late Amy Bell, that was designed by our architect and installed for not only retention pond, but most importantly for green space for our kiddos in Amy Bell. And I heard tonight that the focus was now more on retention pond and not for green space. I would just say that we need to have a dual purpose for that. The retention pond or that space needs to be ready for the start of the school year. And I know we've talked for months and months about closing the chapter, closing the book on our issues with the PRA or the architect. This is again, this is one of those things, again, that comes from full circle, that writes us from nowhere. And I don't think we should incur, the district should fix the problem and then identify the cost and put down a list of things that need to resolve with the architect. Because we certainly should have leases in this building. It's, what, two years old? Yeah, and the architect, they're designing things, but the contractor is installing it. You know, selling these affects it, and we should not be incurring any expense at all for that. So that's all I have. Thank you, Tracy.
And I'll just add, I was actually, I was at Amy Bell last week, and the grass is growing in that space. It's, it's, the rains we've had over the last several weeks has helped it, you know, and I think now that we're keeping it watered and filling in the spots where it got worn away, but I think that will come, come back. But as far as the PAC, you're actually right.
And I think that field area is good, it's, it's much better than it was.
Yeah, one more item that was mentioned about leak, I believe, along the lines of leaks in the roof and the PAC here was also the pool tiles. So Don was showing a little bit of frustration like that, and something I think we all just like to get past. Another thing, I didn't want to extend the length of the building committee meeting any longer than it was, but I thank Don at this point for continuing on the lighting, hallway lighting, LED improvements, the fluorescent tubes get yellow over time as they age, and the hallways look very dreary. The LED bulbs tend to keep their color, a nice white, and the hallways are much brighter. So I think it, I don't know, it just makes me feel better to see yellow light, or I'm sorry, white light in the hallways rather than this dreary, the bulbs are dim type of lighting. I think it's better for the students and staff in those hallways. We don't have all the hallways done yet, but I think maybe next year, about twelve months from now, I think we might be, might complete all the LED lighting projects in the high school here.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, I have the finance committee, updates from July nineteenth.
Yes, the finance committee did meet earlier this evening. So board item, we approved the vouchers. Brittany answered a few questions that we had about the vouchers. Next item was the wireless access point at MacArthur, I believe it was, right, correct? Okay, so the, we bring forward, went to the board with a positive recommendation to purchase the wireless access points through G D W G?
C D.
C D W G for a long network, see thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Did I get that right? This was a tough one.
Okay, comes the board with positive recommendations, does not require a second. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes.
Okay, the next item was the administration building HVAC digital control update, and we tabled that because the quote that we had was for just five V A V boxes, and there's about maybe fifteen total more than that to do. So Brittany and Don are going to go up for a quote on the whole job and see if we might be able to get a price break versus doing these about five at a time for this year and three years after. So we tabled it for the team, just to, you know, see if we can get a price break. I think it goes without saying that Brittany might be offering up the funds to do the extra work, they might be in the budget. And I withheld any humor during that discussion because I was wondering why we needed heat or air conditioning at all in the district building. That was a joke, you're supposed to laugh. All right, next item was, it was the finance item, the June variance report, and I'll summarize it here because it's on video and most of the board was here for finance. And the bottom minus is that we probably will remain level on fund balance. We won't be adding to it and we won't be taking away from it, so we'll probably end up the school year that ended in June even on fund balance. So that means for their boost fund balance next year, we do have some belt tightening and budget cutting to do in this next school year. And that's it for finance.
Okay, any questions? All right, moving on. Item X, unfinished business, discussion in action regarding the resolution authorizing and improving a master tax exempt lease purchase agreement with U S Bank for improvement in finance incorporated and the video property schedule. Brittany, will you go?
Yes, Liz, and I don't remember what month it came, was it April? In April, we brought through the board leases to go up for our technology, which we bring annually, a four-year lease. We got that lease document and we sent it to council, council then had to, I think, a legal opinion. With the legal opinion, they had to have a board resolution, and that's the board resolution that's coming tonight, just to say that we actually get to sign the document and move forward with the lease that was approved in April. If we wanted to approve in April, we would have had to brought the lease with us and had the signatures done at that time, because we didn't have the lease finalized at that time, we have to bring it back, and now the signatures aren't done, and I have to move forward with actual signed documents, and I believe there in the polls are somewhere for some people to sign tonight. So it's basically the same lease that you approved back in April, it's just the actual signed documents tonight.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the approving a master tax exempt lease purchase agreement with U S Bank for improvement, leasing and finance Inc. and the related property schedule.
So, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion in action for teacher resignations. That's your stuff. I'll pass over to Mr. Proctor.
Trisha Burge recently submitted her letter of resignation at June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. She was hired in August of two thousand eight, German Town School District, as a special education teacher at Coneyline Elementary School. Additionally, Brittany McKay recently submitted her letter of resignation effective June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. She was hired in August of two thousand fourteen in the German Town School District as a special education teacher at German Town High School. We ask to approve both resignations. I'll point out that they did occur prior to July first, so therefore all the damages deed is not going to reflect.
I'll have a 13 motion.
I'm making the motion to approve the resignations of Trisha Burge and Brittany McKay, thank them for their service to the students, their families, and German Town School District, and approve posting and filling the vacancy.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes. Moving on, I have the discussion in action for teacher intercontracts. Mr. Bellwark.
Thank you. We have three contracts that came forward. First off, Carl Anderson, English teacher, German Town High School. Carl's being recommended as a result of a teacher resignation. This is a one-point-oh F T E regular contract for fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty. Second, Caitlin Nakula, English teacher, German Town High School. Caitlin's being recommended as a result of a teacher resignation. She's one-point-oh regular contract for forty thousand. By the way, Jenny Davis, speech and language pathologist, she's being recommended as a result of her retirement, so regular contract for fifty-nine thousand. We ask to approve all three contracts.
I'll have a 13 motion.
I'm going to approve the one-point-oh F T E regular contract for Carl Anderson at fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, the one-point-oh F T E regular contract for Caitlin Nakula at forty thousand dollars, and a one-point-oh F T E regular contract for Jenny Stabat at fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes. Item C, discussion in action on fall coaching contracts. Mr. Black.
Yep, that's Mr. Bellwark as well.
Thank you. The director of student activities and the director of human resources are requesting approval to issue the attached co-curricular coaching contracts for German Town High School and Kennedy Middle School for the twenty-one, twenty-two schools. These are fall contracts. Mr. Earl has scheduled a vacation day at the end, and will be with us, she will be at our next meeting, will have more coaching and business to attend to. The winter and the spring coaching and yearly advising co-curricular contracts will be rested at later dates. Contracts for new and existing employees will not be issued until appropriate forms and background checks have been completed. Further, this is a pandemic carryover contract language, we approve the following for this group from twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Compensation for coaching and advising contracts will utilize a prorate approach based on the number of viable practices and competitions completed.
I'll have a 13 motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fall coaching contracts as stated.
Second. Any discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes. Moving on, I have the E, discussion in possible action regarding enrollment update.
Thank you. You have, and you've seen these before, enrollment update. There are two issues that I want to bring to your attention, as has occurred in many summers, we've had some bubbling of enrollment, in particular, you know, the first grade at MacArthur is at a number of seventy-five, which based on the church that we use quite regularly, is in a red, which would go into another section. Additionally, there is a kindergarten class at, kindergarten sections at Rockfield that are at fifty, that would be two sections of twenty-five, based on.
That would mean two sections of twenty-five, based on enrollment guidelines. This would as well lead into another section. Now, we're at a unique time with another full board meeting in one month. I put this particular enrollment of these in a section that we could discuss and potentially take action on. And that said, we're still at the point where we need to probably monitor closely. We have tried to look for other classes that could potentially collapse and create space, but it's not as easy as it, as we would have hoped. So we'll continue to strive to find ways to make this work. Obviously, this all program, I've talked about this quite a bit, is a budget issue in that it's, these are the sections that aren't budgeted for. We'll continue to look at attrition, and we'll continue to look at positions that are vacant, that haven't been filled permanently in a, in a way of supposed staff positions. Obviously, if we can improve the ten dollars, then we potentially make these possible. But we don't want to be in a position where in one month, with that being so close to school, we're straining in the final minute to, to work to work on the possibility of hiring.
Okay, thank you. And I've, discussion in action to approve summer I E P diagnostic contracts.
I think we read the summer school contracts first, that's Mr. Lamb. But she's also in the I E P diagnostic.
Thank you. So regarding the additional summer school contracts, this is essentially add-on to agenda items in the past couple of meetings, as we've identified additional students who registered and/or additional needs during the course of summer school, for which we have to have staff in place to get students. So that's essentially what it is up here. We ask to approve the additional staff members for summer school.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer school contracts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. That passes. Now, we'll turn to the summer I E P diagnostic contracts.
And then, as part of routine as well, we have evaluations that continue into and during the summer, and staff are necessary to complete those evaluations. So we ask to approve these contracts for the staff members to be available to continue the evaluation process for those students.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer I E P and I D S contracts as stated or presented.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item G, extended school year contracts.
Thank you again. The one thing that I did want to point out from the last item as well as for this item, there was a typo in the background, and that is Amanda Latch. That should be listed in the last item and also the current item for the extended school year services. So she is providing our services to students who require them for the summer based upon their I E Ps. So we ask to approve her to continue to be open to that.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the contract as presented with the correction of Amanda Latch.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item H, discussion in action to approve Germantown High School choir. Mr. Sussman.
Yeah, I believe we have someone from the choir department. I guess not. They have, they, they, you have the background, but they have a trip that's several months away, but they, they want approval at this point to really just advertise and to start fundraising, and they need to fundraise and to pay for the trip. Like the trip that happened with BAND this last year, you know, they went as long as we could before making this decision, and then you end up saying, we're going to postpone it. The choir is going to ask for, for approval for this, for this trip, as well, they know it's pretty far off, and they understand that sometimes things change, but they want to be able to advertise and start some fundraising.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the overnight travel request for Germantown High School choir to travel to Minneapolis, Minnesota from April eighth, twenty twenty-two to April tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes. I hope they have a successful trip to get to go. Item I, the special hospital action to revise the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar. Mr. Sussman. Again.
And for candidates to include, I think that's the enrollment. Well, since it was two sections that we talked about, maybe I think that we need to move on those. I'm thinking we may need a motion. You could be more on that.
See anything?
So we, we talked about two sections that are in public numbers, growing to the point that we may need to hire two additional teachers to cover them. And those aren't, those aren't planned for, involved in the budget. So if we need to do that, the board in my mind would need to act on that.
I'm not convinced.
Yeah, I make the suggestion that you monitor the situation, and if the board is it, maybe we can have an action item for the full board, a second meeting that month, which would be our typical committee meetings, but perhaps we could have an item just to approve contracts.
And I believe the board policy says at those grade levels, we can't go into the red anyway, so. Correct. But our practice has been to seek approval. Right, we'll work. We can make that happen now. The, minimally, if we know approaching that, we feel the need to host. Hosting is different than hiring. Correct. So I think we could forgive that, or we'll, we'll do exactly what you're saying. Okay? Okay. Aye. This is a potential revision to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year calendar. To item N, other members of the committee have had a discussion over the last week over on the ways that we can modify to accommodate for Martin Luther King Junior Day. The way that we would like to do that is as follows. Improve twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year calendar for Germantown School District currently has students and staff attendance on Martin Luther King Junior Day, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. In observance of this federal holiday, we are proposing a modification to the approved school calendar that would make this a day off for students and staff. In order to make this possible, we are proposing to make Monday, April eighteenth, a regular school day. That was previously noted as an off day in consideration of the fact that it is the day after Easter Sunday. Additionally, we are also proposing a move, to move the teacher work day on January twenty-first to January twenty-fourth. This would create two four-day student weeks as opposed to one three-day student week, which wasn't desirable as we agreed to. I think I've talked with members of the committee and the leadership, and we feel comfortable that this is a positive move. As well, it would maintain, on contractual status, a number of days and a number of student days.
Do our peer districts have off school that day?
Many, many do. There are some that, as well as things that we've talked about over the years, and the leadership kind of knows a couple, so there are many.
Hasn't Germantown historically alternated Martin Luther King Day with President's Day as days off? Has Germantown alternated Martin Luther King Day with President's Day?
Not the last five years.
Okay.
No, it's been a day of service where the kids do service projects at school.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school calendar as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Just to be clear, it's with the modifications.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea to try and work in Martin Luther King as a holiday. We, I just recently got that at my employer. It's very nice.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mike, can you repeat those changes one more time, please?
Sure.
January seventeenth is off for staff and students in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. January twenty-
Is now a regular school day. And then-
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth through, twenty-first goes to the twenty-fourth.
So January twenty-fourth is now a teacher work day.
It's in the agenda, item ten, I.
So they're changing January seventeenth and April eighteenth. So April eighteenth was off before.
Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye.
January seventeenth, they're not going. Then they're not going, January twenty-fourth, but they are so January twenty-first.
So I'll entertain another motion.
It's clear as mud, right?
Motion, move, step, move into closed session, because we're going to state it.
We're not, we have a closed session.
Oh, we're not having a closed session, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Motion, Jen?
It's clear, California.
Discussion. Seeing none, all was in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming. Drive home safely.